Welcome to this evening's city council meeting for the city of Yukon, Oklahoma. We're gathered here in council chambers in the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street. It is September 18th at approximately 7:00 PM. This evening, we'll have an invocation given by Perry Green from GodinAmerica.com, followed by our flag salute. Please rise if you're able.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we are grateful for who you are and for the ways that you have blessed us. We thank you, Father, for this, this time that we can gather together and to realize that this is more than just a meeting, but it is an opportunity to map out the future of our community. We are thankful for those who are giving their time to plan and act for the citizens of our town. And please, Father, give them the keen eyes and the clear understanding of the times, broaden their wisdom and sense of humility as they depend on you and as they lead us. Please bless the deliberations for tonight, and may you be honored above all that we do. And we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Tillmore.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Selby.
Here.
Shriver.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
This evening, we do not have any presentations or proclamations. At this time, we'll have our visitors section of the agenda. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time and state your name and address. You are requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to City of Yukon business. Do we have any visitors at this time? Please.
I'm Alan Ridgeway. I'm with the Historical Society. I live at 704 South Second Street. Couple of weeks ago, Yukon City Council voted to dispose of computer equipment. As a member of the Historical Society, I would like to ask if they could donate some of that to the Historical Society. We run strictly on donations and as many of you know, last few years, donations have not been very so I would appreciate anything you guys can do.
Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway.
Thank you.
Are there any other visitors that would like to speak before the council this evening? All right, at this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The acting city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 4th, 2024, and payment of material claims in the amount of $2,255. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Tillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as Yukon City Council. We'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. Similarly, this item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The acting city manager recommends a motion that will approve the revised minutes of the special meeting of August 20th, 2024, the minutes of the special meeting of September 4th, 2024, payment of material claims in the amount of $764,450.86, the annual renewal of the agreement with the Yukon BMX for their continued use of Taylor Park BMX Track, the annual renewal of the agreement with the Yukon Horseshoe Club to continue their use of the City Park Horseshoe Facility, the annual renewal of the agreement with the Yukon Christian Athletic Association to continue their use of the Hillcrest Park Softball Field, the annual renewal of the agreement with the Yukon Soccer Club to continue their use of both Ranchwood and Taylor Parks, the annual renewal of the agreement with the Central Oklahoma RC Club to continue their use of Taylor Park RC Raceway. Designate the items on the attached list from the technology department as surplus in authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have one question here, Acting City Manager. Would it be possible for Mr. Cooper to assess whether the Historical Society may be eligible to receive a donation of computer equipment that might help them?
We can sure look at that and discuss that. Probably the thing would be, the issue would be the software for the operating of the system because the way our system works. So that'd be the question, how we'd handle that. We can sure discuss it.
Yeah, I'm happy to approve this if the city, Acting City Manager and City Manager could assess that, not just for this donation item, but in the future for organizations in our good city that operate on donations. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Tillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes. At this time, we'll have reports from boards, commissions, or city officials. We'll begin with Mitchell Horton, who will give us an update on the Treasury Investment RFP.
As you know, you have given staff a direction to start looking at investments for the city as well as making sure the funds are invested. We are on track with the timeline that was given. We did go ahead and have a meeting to answer any questions. Hopefully, we'll get all the questions answered by this Friday, and we'll be on the timeline to provide the packets to the council once we receive them.
Great. How many banks attended the pre-bid meeting?
We think nine maybe. Is that right, Doug?
Yeah, there are some people that attended via Zoom that we can't pin down what bank they are from. So nine or 10 probably, possibly 11.
We did not make it mandatory, of course, but we did actually send out to 13 different entities that had presence in the area, so hopefully we'll get 13 qualifying quotes for us to review, so.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? All right, at this time, we'll have a bank interest income update from Doug Shivers.
Mr. Mayor, I've put a report in front of each of you that gives a lot of numbers and a lot of small print, but we were trying to just keep it on one page as best as we could. The thing about CDs is that most of them do not get interest added monthly. It can be structured on a certain number of months, or it can be when the CD renews. And so that's why when you look down at the CDs, some of them look like they did last month, and some of them have other numbers in there with them. There's not a lot to report, except that our accounts continue to gain interest and grow.
Can you give us an idea how much difference in interest we've, we're now getting dollar-wise?
I haven't really run that comparison. I know that on the CDs, a lot of those matured back in January, and the annual interest then was actually pretty comparable to the interest that shows on that report for the first round that interest was accrued. And when that happened was when we went to the bank, we said, this is what we'd like to do, and they said, okay, well, those CDs are in a renewal period right now, so we'll renew them. And so the interest was credited at that point. So they were drawing interest before, at a pretty good rate. And that's why the year-to-date interest is a pretty, it's a number that is larger than would add up, I think, if you just went and did the numbers on those. I have not looked at a spreadsheet or done the math to compare what interest now is compared to what it was, but I can do that for you, and we can have that next report.
That'd be great. But we are making more money. Is that fair to say?
Yes, sir. I think that's very fair.
Do we have, are all of, I know that at least one bank was reinvested in interest-bearing accounts. Are all banks now bearing, where we have checking accounts bearing interest?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So this one to effect in August?
July and August.
I think it'd be good if we could get the run rate from June of 2024, if some of them went into effect in July, so that we kind of have, because we did book a budget amendment last meeting. I think it's important for us to make sure that amendment was accurate, given the run rate, so we really need June's run rate on the approximately $30 million of funds in checking accounts. Can you prepare that for the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Very good. So are all, how many, how many do we have there coming up that are still subpar or lower interest rates that? So we're good?
Everything is at a market rate as we were directed.
Okay, very good. All right, any other questions on that item? All right, at this time, we'll take up the calendar for 2025 Yukon Municipal Authority and City Council meetings. Typically, we have our meetings set for the first and third Tuesdays. And with the exception of June, which we typically push to the latest possible date there, just to clean up any budget items and close out the year cleanly. Are there any, any calendar things that we need to know about from council members before we set that calendar? I think I adjusted the one that falls on spring break for Yukon Public Schools, that meeting, and shifted the June meeting to the latest Tuesday in June. Are there other items that we need to be mindful of, council members?
I was at a conference last week and talked to several mayors who, especially that little suburb south of us called Mustang. They have gone to having one council meeting a month, and I was like, how do you do that rather than having two? I said, how do you get your bills paid? And they said, well, everybody just knows to get them in. And he said, it's really made a difference in in their process. I mean, it makes a little bit longer meeting for the one, but they've gone to one instead of two. And as people, you know, come available, you know, like my time will be up in a year and a half, trying to get somebody who can commit to once a month is a lot easier than twice a month for some people. But I just think that's something that we need to maybe look at for the future.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. Yeah, so here in the month of October, we're gonna, we're, we've canceled one meeting, and it's on the agenda here to discuss placement of a second meeting to pay bills. But I think it's, it's important to think about whether our bill pay process can become efficient, or our vendors can just understand that it's going to be an extra on average 15 days for them to get paid. By, by our city charter, we're only required to meet once a month. And aside from the first meeting in May, the day of the week is not prescribed. So I think those are all things. Feel free to send any feedback in to the city clerk. I'll send the draft to the city clerk on the calendar. We'll hopefully lock it down for next meeting. Any other items there on the calendar for next year? All right. At this time, we'll consider approving a special meeting of the city council, speaking of which, and setting a date during the week of October 21st, 2024, for the purpose of approving the claims list to pay the city's vendors. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
What would you like to move to?
Oh.
We had to pick the date.
I thought, oh, we're moving to 21st.
The 21st is a Monday, so I'm, I'm kind of tied up that week, which is, I do have a little bit of free time on, on the Thursday. I don't think this is gonna be a long meeting.
I teach Bible study every Monday, and I've committed that to every Monday because my council meetings are always on Tuesday.
Okay, so Monday is out. Is anybody free on that Thursday?
I think Thursday would probably work for me.
Why is the Tuesday out?
I'm tied up. I'm out of town that, that Tuesday evening.
Could Jeff not take over?
I don't think I can. I think Tuesday I've got things. Thursday would work better for me.
I'm flexible any day.
I have a board meeting on a Thursday, but I'm not sure, and I've asked my husband to send my calendar to me because I'm old school.
Okay. Do you want to table it?
Yeah, table it and email some dates.
And we could do it on that Thursday, and if I'm not here, if I have another board meeting, I can just miss.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion for Thursday, or do you want to table it?
I, I move that we set the date for Thursday, October 24th at 7:00 PM.
A second. Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Tillmore.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
At this time, we'll conduct a public hearing in consideration of declaring 115 North Seventh Street, Unit A through D, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of Chapter 54, Section 54-2, Subsection 15 of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute a grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare, directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance with Chapter 54, Section 54-3 of the Code of the City of Yukon, directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery cost for such work if done by the city, directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into the specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated, and further directing the filing of a notice in the city clerk's office. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I have something to say. Does this thing work in tonight? So.
Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Trey Bishop. I live at 12541 West Reno Avenue. And I wholeheartedly agree with Mitch's guys over there that the place is a nuisance, and probably the Yukon Police Department is in on that agreement as well. It is a nuisance, but it's not because of the actual structure. The structure is unsecured. This is true. That makes it a danger. But the main problem is that people come and go and squat in this place however they like, and they're, they don't just come and go, they're actually invited there by the people who help them with their bad habits. So the problem isn't the structure itself, the problem is the people who are exercising authority over the property. I have today, I hesitate to say brokered because I'm not a real estate broker. I have coordinated a deal between the owner of record and an Afghan family that I've been sponsoring for the past three years. We've desperately been looking for a place for these people to live, and they're good, salt-of-the-earth people. I have, and I'll, I have here in the folder the purchase, the contract. The closing date is set for October 30th. The, we will run into one issue, which is that it is, Mandy Parks is the owner of record, but she's married to Donnie Parks. So by Oklahoma law, Roger can probably tell us more about the legalities of that. But if Donnie will not show up at closing, we will file with the courts for a partition of property so that Donnie will get his part, and we'll proceed with the sale anyway. What I am hoping that you guys will do is give me 30 or 45 days to demonstrate that these people will get in there with a large dumpster, gut this place out, clear everything out, secure the doors and the windows, and as soon as it's practical, we will get Mitch's guys over there to do an interior inspection and see what has to be done to bring this place up to speed. There may be electrical work, probably, you know, just simple things like that, other than the fact that it's really, really nasty and it's not secure. But that is what I am hoping that you guys will do, is just give us some time to complete this contract. And I've also brought with me a, so that you know that the buyer has the ability to do this, he's given me a copy of his bank statement, so, and I will not give you a copy, but I will show you so that you can see it. I don't want it to become public record with his name on it. But you will see that he actually has the funds to purchase it and to rehabilitate the property, so can I approach and show you guys these things?
Not if they're not going to be part of the record.
Okay. And I believe it says on, does it say October 30th or September 30th?
Mr. Mayor, it might not hurt for him to step back to the podium so we can get this on record, but he can go ahead and hand the information to you.
You can pass those here, and we'll, we'll pass them down to the council persons, and you can, you can speak about the details of it.
So you can see from the bank statement that we have more than enough to cover the purchase cost and still have two-thirds of the amount left over to rehabilitate the property. I've spoken to Mitch about it. It looks like we're also going to have to have an upgrade on the lift station. You can see there's plenty of money there to do that as well.
What is the, what is the capacity of the potential buyer and maybe even the seller to do a cleanup even in the next two weeks of the exterior and secure the property?
The plan, if you guys give us the time, is that we will get a dumpster over there next week and get going on it. I think it shouldn't take us more than a week to have these places gutted out and the windows and doors secured so that nobody else can get in. I contacted Yukon Police Department today to talk to them about trespassing these people who are continually squatting in there or just showing up who don't have legal authority to be there, and they're exercising control over the property as though they own it.
So are you saying that you can commit to having the exterior trash that's over there and, and the mess that is in the yard? It's all documented in the pictures here in the council agenda, as well as, as well as the windows and doors that are not secure, those can all be secured?
100%. Now, I may need Mitch to go over there with me and talk me through things that I'm not thinking need to be done, but we have the money and we have the contractors to get over there and get it done quick.
I think the important thing, like if we were to table an item like this, which has been worked on since, I mean, I think it's probably gone back further than that, but we have very clear documentation back to 2019 on this item where this, this problem has been ongoing. We, it's, it's really, it's, it's unsafe. It's unsafe with people habitating in a structure that is not, is not fit for habitation, and it, it's unsecure, and it, and the the area around that property, as we went to review it this past weekend, it's just, it's, it's really in bad shape. And it, I don't think, with the right manpower and the right, you know, dumpster and so on, it could get cleaned up very quickly. But I don't think that we can delay this beyond even our next council meeting, which is two weeks from now.
Right, okay, so.
When's the closing date?
What's that?
October 30th.
October 30th?
Is it October or September? My, I'm sorry, I apologize. My dad doesn't think I'm contracted.
I think it was down in the middle of that somewhere.
Are you looking for 30 to 40 days after you close?
October.
No, 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 no. When we close, I expect to have the property already cleaned up. Like I told Brian, we'll get over there and if you guys give us the stay in the next week, we should have a dumpster in there and be cleaned up with a crew. And we'll hire a crew to do it. We're not gonna, I'm not gonna get in there with some kids and do it like Huckleberry Finn, or Tom, sorry, I guess I gotta do that, but. I, I can, I can commit to having this place cleaned up in the next week. I want this family to live. We, a couple of you guys already know that my father owns the duplexes that are directly south of these. And so this isn't good for us either. They're coming over and stealing our power, you know, and they get high on drugs, and they're like, we need to run a fan. They'll go connect to us, or they'll go run a hose to our water or something, so. And we actually, Mitch can tell you we're already in a little issue over there because of them stealing power from us, so.
Didn't we approve one a while back that lady was supposed to rehab one, and we gave her a little bit of time?
We gave, yeah, we gave her some time, and fortunately, she didn't have the funds to rehab it, and it looks like that one is going to come back around for demolition.
And that's what I don't want this one to do.
Absolutely.
We spend way too much time on that.
This is totally different than hers, though. I mean, this is Trey stepping in, and you haven't been doing this since 2019.
No.
She had.
Yeah.
And, you know, I see this as win-win for our community, but also for this family. And it's taken a lot of work for you to garner all of the pieces of this, and I.
I would love to put a good family behind my tenants right there. A family that I know is not going to bring in drugs, a family that's going to contribute to our community culturally, you know, all sorts of ways. They're just amazing people. They are different.
Right.
You know, they dress different. They wear the pajamas and everything, so, but they're amazing people.
So I see giving this extra time more than the one who did.
Yeah. I agree, there could be a win. My, my concern is y'all go invest some money and some time here the next couple of weeks, secure it and clean it up without a guarantee that the seller's going to come through and that this deal's going to be done. Do, do you do all this work, and they say, oh, man, that, that helped us out. We're going to keep that now?
Well, no, because we have a contract. Now, we don't have Donnie's signature on the contract, but Donnie is also not going to come and refute it. So if he doesn't show, one of two things can happen here. He's either going to show up and sign the contract as well, or we are going to do a partition of property with the courts and get the courts to handle it, because he's, he simply cannot be found. They've been, the couple has not lived together or really been in communication for 10 years. She lives in El Reno. And Mitch isn't listening right now, but he should know that the reason she is not here, the reason she was not aware of the demolition, is that she moved from Woodson Street, where the assessor has her listed living, down the road to North North Street. There's a road in El Reno called North North Avenue. And so she hasn't been getting any of this documentation. She didn't know that this was up on the agenda to be demolished.
Okay.
But she was very happy to move it along and get sold, and she's going to try to get with Donnie as well, hopefully to get the, to get him to cooperate. But if he doesn't cooperate, like I said, and maybe the city attorney can advise you on whether or not what I'm proposing is feasible, but I think it is. I think this is how some other sales have been handled where one of the persons disappears due to whatever habit they have in their life.
Two weeks from today, you can have it cleaned up and secured.
Cleaned up and secured. I can guarantee those things. I can't guarantee the, I mean, and, and by that time, hopefully, Mitch's guys will come in to inspect as well, because as soon as possible, I want to know what we're going to have to do to get this place livable. I want to move them in there as soon, they want to move in as soon as possible. They're paying rent right now downtown in Oklahoma City, you wouldn't believe, but.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bishop.
So have I, have you guys all had a chance to look at my contract?
Yeah, I've got it right here. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion at this time on the public hearing? Any other commenters from the public that would like to make a statement at this public hearing? Seeing no more discussion, we'll move on to the next item. At this time, we'll consider.
Mr. Mayor, you need to close the public hearing.
At this time, we'll close the public hearing. At this time, we'll take up item number five. We'll consider a motion to declare 115 North Seventh Street, Unit A through D, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of Chapter 54, Section 54-2, Subsection 15 of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance for such nature as to constitute a grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare, directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance with Chapter 54, Section 54-3 of the Code of the City of Yukon, directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery cost for such work if done by the city, directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into the specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated, and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to extend 45 days for Mr. Bishop to come back and let's review it then.
Do I have a second?
Will you add two weeks to get it secured on there? Is that something we can do?
I don't know.
The motion is on the floor. We need a second before we have that discussion.
Get second it, and then you can ask me to amend it.
I'll second it if you amend it.
Now amend, I'll amend it, yeah.
It means get it cleaned and secured up or lease secured?
Councilwoman Selby.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to amend to that we get forty-five days for us to come back, but that within two weeks, the place is secured and cleaned up.
Any other discussion on this item?
Do we need to have an actual date on that?
Uh, probably this, it would, I guess it would come back to the council the second meeting in November. Does that make sense to you guys? Or I'm sorry, second, second meeting in November?
Wouldn't be the first.
Maybe, maybe the first meeting in November. Yeah, first meeting in November?
I don't have a calendar.
Does that make sense? Okay, so delay. Um, Councilwoman Selby, would you uh mind amending to um instead of forty-five days, amending to to uh for this to reappear or be reassessed at? In the first council meeting in November?
First council meeting in November.
All right, the motion on the floor um is to reconsider this or to table, I guess, to defer action on this item until. The first meeting in November and uh with the agreement from uh Mister Bishop that the property exterior will be cleaned up and secured. Within two weeks, um, and the item will appear on the first meeting in November. Do I, yeah, do I have a second?
Sir.
All right, any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll hold up another public hearing concerning the implementation of the updated utility rates. Do I have any comment from the public on this item? Seeing no comment from the public on the utility rate, the updated utility rates, we will now close this public hearing. At this time, we'll consider item seven, a motion for discussion and possible action of ordinance number fourteen fifty-six. An ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Sections one fourteen dash thirty-one. Through one fourteen dash sixty-eight, one fourteen dash ninety-six, one fourteen dash ninety-eight, one fourteen dash one oh-two. One fourteen dash one thirty-four, one fourteen dash one ninety, one fourteen dash three fifty-three, one fourteen dash three fifty-four. And removing section one fourteen dash ninety-nine by setting rates and fees for water and sewer service. Making certain additions and cer- insertions and deletions, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict, conflict. Providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion for discussion and possible action of ordinance number fourteen fifty-seven.
Mister Mayor, you skipped number seven, A, the emergency clause.
Oh, I'm sorry. This time, we'll consider the emergency clause for ordinance number fourteen fifty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Seeing no more dis- uh any discussion, seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion for discussion and possible action of ordinance number fourteen fifty-seven. An ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Sections ninety dash one through ninety dash twenty-five. By setting rates and fees for solid waste services, making certain additions, insertions, and deletions, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict. Providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number fourteen fifty-seven. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
I'll thank um Jason Beal, Jason Morrell, the entire team at the city, Arnold's team, um meter readers. Everybody that's collaborated and of course Acting City Manager Mitchell Horton for the work on these utility rates. It was a team effort and uh Jason did a nice, Jason Beal did a nice job leading it. Um, I appreciate the uh hard work over the summer and wrapping up here with uh new utility rates. At this time, we'll consider approving the contract for the Oklahoma Municipal or Metropolitan Orchestra conducted by Zachary Daniels and the City of Yukon. For the twenty twenty-four Sounds of the Season Concert on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars as recommended by the Parks and Rec Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Why are we not using the Philharmonic?
The Philharmonic, we were in discussions with them uh about the concert and they had a date conflict on the date that we had reserved. And had initial conversations with them about, and so we moved in a different direction.
That is so strange because they've always been there, yeah.
Correct, correct. We're we're excited to to move forward with uh with the new orchestra.
Will they be during the Fourth of July, though?
Uh, yes, yes, for sure. And the this this orchestra is conducted by Zachary Daniels, who worked with Winds of the Prairie on July third.
Zachary Daniels was really a a protege of Erb Wagner, is that correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the bid specifications and authorizing team design to advertise for bids for the wastewater treatment plant expansion phase one. As recommended by the city engineer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Robbie, I wanna thank your team for the hard work. I I don't know if we set any records, but the council packet was five hundred and fifteen pages. Probably uh with the largest bid package I've ever read. Um, I do think one item that um that Acting City Manager Mitchell Horton and uh our our incoming city manager, Mike Castro. Brought to our attention was potential amendment to the liquidated damages clauses and maybe changing some of those rates up up a bit to match what some. Market rates are on uh liquidated damages in these types of contracts.
Yes, we'll we'll take a look at that. That's what we've done for for many years and so what I'll do is. The City of Oklahoma City, certain other cities, we'll kind of look at what they do.
Benchmark some of the liquidated damages.
Raise it up a little bit.
Okay.
And and I guess while I'm here, just so everybody knows, so right now, our our plan is we're gonna begin advertisement October fourth. Uh, receive bids uh November sixth. And then right now ha- uh have the city council consider award November nineteenth.
It's a great schedule.
Yeah.
And just while you're up there, you wanna tell everybody what phase one may consist of? Just a little quick brief for me. It don't have to be long, just.
Third time's a charm.
It is, but I know somebody's gonna ask me later.
So we're gonna remove our two screw pumps and install new two submersible pumps to lift the water so we can process it. We're gonna construct a new blower building. We're gonna replace the diffusers in the aeration basin. Build a new splitter box to the three clarifiers, rehabilitate a clarifier. And then we have two alternates. One is to build the pump station to the river, which the pipe. From the plant to the river, that's phase two that will be built next year with federal funds. And then alternate number two is to remove the blower equipment in the existing building so we can get that converted to a maintenance building.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Shriver, you have the motion. Uh, I was wondering if you'd be willing to amend it um to authorize the city manager. As well as city engineer to revise paragraph two point seven six, which is the paragraph that deals with those liquidated damages and the failure to complete the work on time. Are you willing to make an amendment?
I am.
All right, so we'll, the amendment that uh Councilman Shriver is willing to make um would authorize the city engineer and the city manager. To revise paragraph two point seven six, uh failure to complete work on time, um but the rest of the bid specification will remain as is.
Yeah, and what we'll do, once we make that final revision on what we want the those dollar amounts to be, that that's what we will use. For any other bids that we do in the future.
Perfect, thank you, Rob.
Okay.
Very good, so uh we have amended motion. Um, it's, uh, do I hear a second on that amended motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider authorizing the city engineer to advertise for bids for the emergency storm debris removal contract. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I think this is really an important thing that we have access to in the city. Um, you know, you never know when emergencies are gonna strike, when uh storm. Uh, storms are gonna come in Oklahoma and having the contractors available ahead of time um allows us to restore the city in those times. So this is really important work that the city engineer is doing when it's not a storm. We're not in the midst of a storm, so that when we're, we are, we're ready for it.
I I would like to make uh one comment. Uh, this this is written to be administered by the Public Works Director. So once we award this contract, then it's turned over to the Public Works Director to to take care of this contract.
Very good, thank you, Robbie. Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving emergency repairs for fire truck la- fire department ladder truck, not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars as recommended by the fire chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, what did you break?
So this is for our ladder one truck. Um, we uh noticed this, this came apparent to us in April. Um, when we do our annual ladder inspection, they noticed some rusting through spots on the fly section, which is the very end section of the ladder. It's about a twenty-five foot section. Um, so we con- we uh contacted Conrad Fire. They had to get ahold of Pierce and actually build a whole new section. So they got that ordered. We took the truck to them on July first. And they expected a two to three week build and we just got it back last week, so very glad to have it back. Um, it went through another inspection and we're good to go. The original quote was forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seven eighty-four and then the invoice that we just got back yesterday was fifty-two, six seventy-two, twenty-nine, so.
So it's, the work's already been done?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and was this in the budget?
I'm assuming because I talked to the city manager last year, you know, April, when it happened, it was approved. We had to get the truck.
Okay, so we approved it back before, okay.
Well, it was, it was for forty-nine thousand. It was less than the fifty thousand.
Can you absorb that six thousand dollars?
I guess we're gonna have to.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Rotary just bought you some new nozzles, so maybe that'll save you some money.
All right, any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll discuss and consider possible action regarding parking and impeding traffic along Holly Avenue near She Duck, She Deck Elementary School. I'll open the floor for discussion. So I included some uh pictures in the packet. Um, and I think, you know, I. Some of the challenges that we're facing on Holly and we can take up some of the other streets around the city that are near our schools um at a later time. But in this discussion, we'll limit it to the the area around Holly is um parking and, you know, I guess how you defet de- define it. Uh, along the the uh southbound uh lane of Holly there in front of She Deck. And the the lines begin, you know, call it give or take forty-five minutes before uh when the pre-K, before the pre-K lets out. And that's like an hour and a half before the regular school lets out. And it's it's a, it can be a safety issue um with with a road that's that is uh. Around that curve, you know, it's it's a bit of a blind curve. Um, so, you know, I think I I'd like to hear any ideas that the Acting City Manager or the Police Chief have for resolving this. Are there ordinances that other cities pass in these kind of instances? Um, how do, how do you, how do you all think we can resolve these types of uh traffic issues?
Well, and you said we're gonna keep it to Holly because, I mean, I've had complaints on Cornwell at Parkland. And I know people have complained on Yukon Parkway about Skyview, that it does stop traffic. I don't know about Central and those others.
It it's pretty common with most of the schools in our city. Um, a lot of them are now thirty, thirty-five years old. And they, the setback for those buildings thirty-five years ago wasn't too bad. Everybody rode a bus. Um, also, our population's grown. The problem that we have from an enforcement issue is that these aren't parked abandoned cars. Um, this is traffic waiting to enter a private drive, so they're occupied, they're running. Um, there's just nowhere to put them. The school doesn't have the property to put sixty-five, seventy cars in a thirty-minute window. Because again, they did, that setback for She Deck wasn't for sure.
But I think of it, if I was to go out on Garth Brooks and just park my car in a, in a lane on Garth Brooks, right? And put a sun shade in my car and pop open my Kindle and read it. You, your officers, I'd hear a little doo-doo and there'd be lights behind me and they'd say, you know, sir, is your car broken down? How can we help you?
Right.
And so, I know it's Holly, it's not Garth Brooks Boulevard. But I think there's gotta be a way, because it's, it is a safety issue. I mean, now Holly is double striped, so, I mean. You shouldn't be crossing that lane to pass.
Right.
Um, that's unsafe. It's double striped for a reason. Um, and I don't know if if we need to pass an ordinance and there are, as as Councilwoman said, like there are other. Uh, streets that we need to deal with after, after we cross this bridge and kind of have a discussion here, move on to. Other streets that are having the same issue. And I just don't think that, I mean, it doesn't seem prudent that you can sit in a city street with your car running or not running with the shade up and just sit there.
But I don't think the majority of them have the shade up. I drive by there every day and they're just sitting there waiting in their car, just like when we're, people are going to Together We. And sitting in that long line waiting to turn left or yeah, left. Is there an ordinance against being in line?
No, no.
I mean, I don't like it. Don't get me wrong.
That's the problem for my guys.
Uh-huh.
Essentially, what he's saying is they're, they're not aimlessly sitting there reading their Kindle. They're they're in line trying to get to a destination, pick up a child.
Correct. Well, the prob- the prob- it's like, it's like lining up for a, like if I was to go to a.
Christmas sports game.
Like if I was to go to a Thunder game and there, and everybody else decided to go to a Thunder game, we all just sat on I forty. Like, it doesn't make any sense.
But you're not in line. If if I forty, if the line was going all the way down I forty, you'd be in line.
Or shield, I mean, whatever. If I'm going to a Thunder game and just sitting on shields two hours before a Thunder game, that doesn't make any sense. Right? Like, can you have a no parking or or no standing ordinance on a street like that that's limited to hours?
They're not parking.
I would have to have council review that and see what that looked like on language and whether it could be time-specific. If you do that, where do you put the vehicles that are coming to pick up their children?
I think you're kind of telling them, hey, don't line up before this time, right? To me, it seems prudent to line up fifteen minutes before school lets out, but if you line up an hour and a half before school lets up, it doesn't, like, you're not, you're not, it's not being safe.
Right.
Right?
I know we dealt with it several years back um and considered doing something and actually tried some enforcement activity along Holly. And it pushed the traffic into the residential area. And I think we actually signed um Saint James, maybe Victoria, that you could have.
No parking there.
No parking.
Interesting.
And so then what that did was pushed it back to Holly. So uh we we've looked at the park. Uh, you have a limited number of spaces there. You also have the park open during school hours as well. And if if you use the park as an alternative drive, all you end up doing is putting traffic trying to cross each other. Because they would have to come out of the park, turn right, and then turn left. So now, instead of just blocking the entrance on the one side of the road, we'll be creating a a larger problem.
It's interesting that there's not a problem in the mornings, right? Nobody's waking up at five AM to go sit in front of the school.
Yeah.
Right? But for some reason, the afternoons, people are sitting in front of the school waiting for their child to to uh, you know, appear. And I, I I know that the neighborhoods around there are having trouble with traffic. The the curve on Holly is becoming dangerous and and we're not even, you know, crossing the bridge on on the other. Uh, on Yukon Avenue or on other, you know, streets around on even Vandyment with.
And see, that used to be a Garth Brooks issue at the middle school and the sixth grade center.
Now they've shifted.
And they, the school, you said, hey, we'll use the back currently if we have some more area. And they, the school, you said, hey, we'll use the back curtilage, we have some more area back here, we can put more vehicles, uh, and it moved the Garth Book- Brooks issue over to Yukon Avenue. We, we, we just displaced, it's the same issue, we just moved which roadway everybody was stopped on trying to turn into the school.
But to say you can't get in line until five minutes before, that's gonna cause mass chaos of all these cars coming at five minutes till four, uh, and the kids not getting, you know, I just don't know how you can say, well, you can't get in line to pick your kid up.
It's definitely a challenge, and, and depending on what language you may consider, or what the alternative, uh, to create some type of an enforcement or notification issue, it will displace it somewhere else in some fashion.
I know, and, at Parkland, they have a pass-through over to, um, Grand Teton, I think is the street that they do, and they encourage people to park there. You know, maybe they, they could go back to parking on Victoria or Saint James and, you know, walking to get their children. As long as they don't, um, block driveways.
You can't block a private drive.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yes.
I think you have somebody who has a comment.
Mrs. Burris, can you approach the podium?
Susan Burris, three hundred East Plant Drive, we've run into this when we pick up our grandson in Piedmont, which is a lot different, because the street is just like, you know, um, which school was that, Michael? Um, the fifth and sixth grade, when you turn in, and it's just like, there's nowhere else to go, it's just a two lane. And so, the good part about Yukon is that there's so many other streets that people can get around in, while kids are getting picked up.
And there's another lane.
Yeah.
There's four lanes on, on our streets now, not on Holly.
Yeah, and, and whereas in Piedmont, there's just not. And I'm thinking, just for a small period of time, you know, people could find a way to, people are picking up their kids. That's just my two cents, thank you.
But maybe we encourage the schools to encourage parents to park on side streets and walk and get their, get out of your car and walk and get your kids.
Well, I'm not sure that we've solved any issues, but we've talked about them. Any other comments on this item? Alright, do I hear any motion on this item? Alright, seeing no motions, we'll move on to the next item, item fourteen, discussion and possible action for a budget amendment to resurface the city hall eighty-eight parking lot mural stamped and stained concrete area in the amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand, forty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. In the area behind five thirty-two West Main Street in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, as recommended by the Public Works Director, do I hear a motion?
I move that we, um, send this one back out to, um, I guess out to bid, and see if we can get a couple other, uh, prices. There was some.
We gonna advertise for bids, or we're just asking for more quotes?
Let's ask for more quotes, so, move to, to table this and ask for some more quotes, a couple more, and see what we can do on price.
Do I have a second?
What?
Motion.
I'll second, it seems too hard.
Wait a minute, Roger has something to say.
Due to the, the size of that project, won't you have to go out to public bid, I believe?
We would have to do that anyway, Roger, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's a public works project that's over the threshold.
Very good, okay, so, um, are we, are we, so there's different ways to meet the standard of the statute, right, Roger? In terms of a competitive process?
You have to be very careful with that, I mean.
Yes.
You need to meet the competitive bidding act in, in how you proceed.
To do an RFP?
Right, to do request proposals and all.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we need to discuss this and then bring it back at another date, that way we can have some options maybe, or see what we can do for options.
Okay, the motion on the table, um, Mr. Wooten has the motion on the table, which has been seconded by Mr. Shriver, uh, Mr. Wooten, would you be?
How about I amend, amend this to, uh, table this until the next meeting?
Very good.
And, uh, we'll take a look.
Do I hear a second on that amended motion to table this item?
Second.
Any discussion? I think for the main street program, we're still very excited about this area and making a great place, um, we just wanna make sure that we're being responsible with the taxpayers' dollars and making sure that we get a very competitive, uh, bid for this, this work in compliance with the, uh, with the state statutes as well.
Mr. Mayor, can I add that these numbers are from the per, per contract pricing, so these.
Okay, so these are on the state contract?
In bid, yes.
Okay, let's still, I, I, I like counsel, I like Vice Mayor, uh, Wooten's amended motion to send it back, and let's just discuss it a little bit further. Alright, is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Right. Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Discussion impossible, or, at this time, we'll discuss and consider possible action regarding the purchase and participation in the Route sixty-six Centennial Monument Project, at a cost of thirty thousand per sign from Vox Audio Visual. At this time, I open the floor for discussion. Um, do we have a representative from Vox or, uh, Mr. Peel? Could you all share with us a little bit about this signage?
Yes, um, I'd like to introduce Brian Brown, he approached the city, um, as you know, when they did the centennial, uh, the Oklahoma Centennial, they did the clocks, and so that was his company, and so he's, uh, approached the city of Yukon, uh, with the sign you've seen out front, um, that's been, uh, approved by the Route sixty-six Centennial, so, we just wanted to, uh, put this before council, just so you're aware of it, and I'll let him kinda describe, or talk about the project and the other cities that have, um, participated.
Hi there, so for this project, uh, we collaborated with Stan Carroll, who, among his many things around the world, did the Skydance Bridge over Interstate forty, he's an amazing artist, and ultimately, this will be a nationwide project. We're starting in Oklahoma, each state will have its own unique design on the face, uh, of the monument. We have six communities that have committed, and another one that, in Oklahoma City, well, she, total of seven. I can't publicly name all of them yet, and then we have another six, uh, but El Reno's definitely gonna be getting one, Oklahoma City's getting one, Chandler, Stroud, and Claremore, uh, there's a couple of others we're just trying to cite. I believe there will be one at Lucille's Original Building Station, so, uh, the other one, we're just kinda waiting on some national historic, trust advice to make sure that we're not disrupting a, a site, a landmark site. It's sixteen feet in height, so the thing you saw outside is a prototype that we designed to bring into meetings like this, unfortunately, it was a little bit too much, we'd have to disassemble it for this tonight. One exciting part of the project that is not mentioned in the brochure is there will be a na- nationwide website. Each, it's intended to be for selfies, and people will go across the country and stop, of course, you have the, will have the, the placemaking monument for Yukon, but at each unique site, there will be a QR code where visitors stop. It will direct them to a unique page on this website where you can have historical information about Yukon. So, we feel like this will add a lot of stickiness to the project, the idea being that people will anticipate as they go down the road the next monument location, uh, we're just tremendously excited about it. It's double-sided, raised lettering, it's internally lit, which, because of the sunset, it was really hard to tell, but, um, it lights up very beautifully, but I'm, I'm open to any questions that you may have about it.
I did ask him, because one of my concerns is that it's been approved by the Route sixty-six Commission. I put a call in to, uh, one of the guys there, he's assured me that it does, but I haven't heard back from my guy.
It's the Centennial Commission, yes, it was approved in the August meeting.
Has any demo set out in the weather at all?
I'm sorry?
Have any of the demo set out in the weather?
Uh, yeah, well, it's, it's being produced by GNS Signs, so, I mean, this is all to the standards that they, it's actually to their highest standards. Uh, it's made with steel, it's routed steel, uh, they're using the highest quality automotive paint, it's been engineered for wind loads, uh, at that height. So, you know, we didn't actually do that part of the manufacturing, we, we went to experts for that, so, we're more the conceptual and art people.
And what is the purpose of this, is any of the funds that you guys raise or make, is it gonna go back to any kinda historical thing for sixty-six, or is this just to fund the business?
So, it, uh, absolutely, it's for Route sixty-six, it's, it's a passion project for us to properly memorialize each community along the route, it's something that we feel will be iconic for people as they traverse Route sixty-six. It's made here in Oklahoma by Oklahoma artists, and it's manufactured here, ultimately, will be in states across the country.
Route sixty-six, when we have our centennial, they'll be, I mean, already, there are thousands of people that flock through Yukon down Main Street, and this is what we talked about with the park, and as Matt Pennell has pointed out, you need to have, I mean, we are just so honored that we have sixty-six down, down our Main Street of our town, and so, you need a placemaker, and that's one of the things this would be, would be a placemaker, people would stop, people stop and take their picture with that Route sixty-six on the road, which is a little dangerous.
What's the life expectancy of, of this item?
That's a great question, uh, the manufacturer told us that the highest quality paint, uh, for signs is, you know, anywhere from eight to ten years. Uh, now, one of the things that's kinda cool about this, as opposed to some other, uh, mechanical things, is the only thing inter- internally to turn on is the LED lights, and those are at least ten-year lights, uh, it was built to make it easy to service, so. I, the only thing we imagine happening, of course, we can't control the weather, but, is perhaps, you know, the lights at some point need to be replaced. Uh, but, uh, Jim Gleason at GNS said these are absolutely the best LED lights that he has, that he puts in, he does like, you know, Integris Hospital or whatever the sign is.
Now, these aren't like the ten-year lights that I have at home, that last a year and a half, at best?
No, no, these are something that professional sign company would use for.
So, that, those are ten years as well, you know?
I, I know, and I have some of those at my house, too, that I purchased on Amazon, these are not like those.
Okay.
Okay.
Jason, how many were you proposing, just one sign?
I was leaving that up for discussion, so we have not, um, really taken a step to, um, to recommend any location or anything like that. I mean, if you, if council so chooses to, uh, direct staff to put one on each end, then, uh, I have talked to Arnold, and we know we would have to talk to ODOT to, uh, find a place that hopefully is large enough for a pullover picture, safe picture area and electricity, um, if, you know, if, if it's directed to put one that's centrally located, then again, we'll work with, uh, downtown Yukon area to, uh, to find the appropriate location, but, uh, we're just, right now, we're in the discussion phase, and, uh, we'll do, go at the direction of, of the council.
And I asked where the money would come from, and you said from future capital improvement funds?
I would suggest, if you want to do that capital, I think our hotel motel right now, we budgeted pretty much to the max this year for that account, for the tourism and everything, so, uh, I think, uh, staff, uh, it would be before, if you choose to do something and direct us, then it'd be a, we'll put the budget amendment on, uh, future meeting, and work with the city treasurer to, uh, identify account, but that, that would probably be the, the one right now to pick.
What's the estimated cost to install these?
Thirty thousand.
To install, that's set and plug and played?
That's everything, except the electric, per, per month.
Any other discussion on this item? Do I hear any motions on this item?
A motion that we table this and, um, bring it back for a discussion at a later date.
Do I hear a second? I'll second that, any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider, oh, do we?
Got him, cut that.
Oh, at this time, we'll strike item sixteen from the agenda for the budget amendment, um, and item seventeen, is there any new business? Mr. Clerk, is there any new business?
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the floor for each councilperson to say a few words in closing, this item's reserved for announcements, recognitions, and is not intended for the conduct of city business by the members of the public body, councilperson Selby.
Uh, I'd like to start with thanking Mr. Arnold Adams for closing off our event tonight, and, uh, all of us that sit down here are very much appreciative, aren't we? Also today, I was honored to get to go to the fair and watch our Savannah Station, um, athletes perform, and they were amazing, and each one of them was a winner. Also, I did find out I do have a Pearl Power of a Hundred Gala, but I don't think any of y'all are invited to a women's gala, so, the twenty-fourth is good.
Very good. Councilperson Zimmerman?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Shriver?
I don't have nothing either, sir.
Vice Mayor Wooten?
Arnold, I wanna say awesome job on all the panels around town, uh, keep up the good work, it's, uh, you guys are doing amazing work out there, and I appreciate it.
This time, I'll give some upcoming special events here in Yukon in September and October, Cruisin' for a Cause is this Thursday, that's tomorrow, September nineteenth, five PM, the activities start, it's held in downtown Main Street here in Yukon, and it's free. Visit downtown Yukon for family activities, awesome cars, and more while benefiting Chris, uh, Yukon's Christmas with a cop. Also, the Czech Festival, held the first Saturday in October each year, this year is Saturday, October the fifth. The parade starts at ten AM, activities all day long, um, it's held downtown Yukon on Main Street, uh, the cost is free. Come experience the Czech tradition, uh, experience the history, food, fun, and, uh, catch the parade, the kolaches, polka dancing, and more. And then, uh, lastly, the Chisholm Trail Festival, which is held Saturday, October the twelfth, from ten AM to five PM at Molly Spencer Farm. It's also free, there's live music, live history, reenactments, kids' activities, chuck wagons, food trucks, a pie eating contest, kids' karaoke, uh, pumpkin patch, and more. I'd like to just mention, uh, I, I've mentioned a couple other times, but, uh, I truly believe that the media and the press is, uh, the fourth branch of government that we have in America, and we're blessed to have a great newspaper locally that covers topics that everyone can, uh, come up to speed with, and I'd like in particular to recognize, uh, Conrad for his great work. Um, our condolences as a council, go out to Conrad, uh, his father passed away, uh, lived a full life, uh, passed away at age eighty-eight, and based on his reading list, I know, uh, he influenced Conrad i- in, in a significant way, uh, with literature, and, and he was a reader. That was very clear to me, um, so, uh, we, we're thankful that we have a great, uh, newspaper here in Yukon, and we're thankful that we, uh, have a reporter in Conrad that's so diligent to cover the things that go on in our community uh, for the benefit of all the citizens. With that, uh, this meeting is adjourned.